All right. Well, so right before we get to the seventh trumpet here, does anybody have any questions from the previous section as we wrapped up the two witnesses last time? Anybody? I mean, you don't have to have a question, but you know, definitely wanted to make that available. So, all right. So, so we did finish up Revelation 11 verses 1 through 14. And so now we are kicking off here. Now, verse 14, that section ends with, "The second woe is past; behold, the third woe is coming quickly." What's a woe? A terror. Any other translations for woe, terror? New American Standard 95 has woe.
So would that be the same translation as when Jesus is prophesying against the cities and says, "Woe to you, Jerusalem," and so it'd be terror to you?
Yeah, same word in the Greek. Yep. So, yeah.
So he wasn't messing around then?
He wasn't messing around, no, he wasn't. "Woe to you, Messiah." Yeah, that's right. So, okay, well, here we go. I want to read 15 through 19. And then we will go back through just a little bit of the... Yeah, let's go ahead and read that. "Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven saying, 'The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of His Christ, and He will reign forever and ever.' And the twenty-four elders who sit on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshiped God, saying, 'We give you thanks, O Lord God, The Almighty, who are and who were, because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign.' And the nations were enraged, and your wrath came. And the time came for the dead to be judged, and the time to reward your bond servants, the prophets and the saints, and those who fear your name, the small and the great, and to destroy those who destroy the earth. And the temple of God, which is in heaven, was opened, and the ark of his covenant appeared in his temple; and there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder, and an earthquake, and a great hailstorm.'" All right, so from Mounts, when the seventh trumpet is blown, we might expect another plague, yet another plague, but instead we hear voices in heaven declaring the eternal sovereignty of God and His Christ. "The twenty-four elders joined the celebration, falling before God in worship and praising Him for having taken His great power and begun to reign. The time for rewarding His servants and pouring out His wrath on the destroyers of the earth has come." So, chapter 11, verses 15 through 19 is actually a summary of all that is yet to take place. It's a summary. "The declaration of triumph by the heavenly host," in verse 15, "and the anthem of praise by the worshiping elders," verses 17 through 18, introduce the great themes of the following chapters. "The extensive use of the aorist tense, eleven times in these verses, conveys a sense of absolute certainty about the events taking place." There is a common saying, "It's all over bar the shouting." And the only difference here is that the shout of victory has already begun. Look at Mounts getting poetic. So, all right. Verse 15, so does everybody understand the whole aspect of a summary? I kind of touched on that a little bit last time, but basically, these five verses are a summary of everything we have yet to read, of everything that's going to happen like until like everything is wrapped up. So, I don't know if that's the first time you've ever heard that in studying or reading Revelation, but it's kind of neat to see that we've actually gotten to the seventh trumpet, and this is what we have. Now, just to kind of go back verse by verse, verse 15, "Then the seventh angel sounded, and there were loud voices in heaven, saying, 'The kingdom of the world has become the kingdom of our Lord and of His Christ, and He will reign forever and ever.'" So we would expect the seventh trumpet blast to be followed by the third woe, right? Because remember verse 14, "The second woe is past; behold, the third woe is coming quickly. But instead, we hear voices of a great heavenly host declaring the final triumph of the kingdom of God and the establishment of His eternal reign. The voices are not those of a glorified church; the expression 'our Lord and His Christ' would not be appropriate for the church, because their Lord is the Christ. The voices should not be limited to any particular class of angelic beings, such as the four living creatures of chapters four and five, but represent the host of heaven with the same sort of indefineness that we find in chapter 12, verse 10, and chapter 19, verse 16." So the burden of the angelic declaration is that the dominion and rule of this world have been transferred to God and His Christ. Because who's the ruler of this world now? Satan. So they've been transferred to God and His Christ, who shall reign forever and ever. This great eschatological event that establishes once and for all the universal sovereignty of God is a reoccurring theme in Old Testament prophecy. Daniel predicted the day when the kingdom of God would utterly destroy the kingdoms of this world. So let's go to Daniel, chapter 2. It's a good day, anytime we can go to Daniel, right? Here we are, reading John's Bible. All right. So, Daniel, chapter 2, starting at verse 31. "You, O king, were looking, and behold, there was a single great statue, that statue which was large, and of extraordinary splendor, was standing in front of you, and its appearance was awesome. The head of that statue was made of fine gold, its breast and its arms of silver, its belly and its thighs of bronze, its legs of iron, its feet partly of iron and partly of clay. You continued looking, until a stone was cut out without hands, and it struck the statue on its feet of iron and clay, and crushed them. Then the iron, the clay, the bronze, the silver, and the gold were crushed, all at the same time, and became like chaff, from the summer threshing floors; and the wind carried them away, so that not a trace of them was found. But the stone that struck the statue became a great mountain, and filled the whole earth. This was the dream; now we will tell its interpretation before the king. You, O king, are the king of kings, to whom the God of heaven has given the kingdom, the power, the strength, and the glory; and wherever the sons of men dwell, or the beasts of the field, or the birds of the sky, He has given them into your hand, and has caused you to rule over them all. You are the head of gold. After you, there will arise another kingdom inferior to you; then another third kingdom of bronze, which will rule over all the earth. Then there will be a fourth kingdom, as strong as iron, inasmuch as iron crushes and shatters all things; so like iron, that breaks in pieces, it will crush and break all these in pieces. In that you saw the feet and toes, partly of potter's clay and partly of iron; it will be a divided kingdom; but it will have in it the toughness of iron, inasmuch as you saw the iron mixed with common clay. As the toes of the feet were partly of iron and partly of pottery, so some of the kingdom will be strong, and part of it will be brittle. And in that you saw the iron mixed with common clay; they will combine with one another in the seed of men; but they will not adhere to one another, even as iron does not combine with pottery. In the days of those kings, the God of heaven will set up a kingdom, which will never be destroyed; and that kingdom will not be left for another people; it will crush and put an end to all these kingdoms; but it will itself endure forever. Inasmuch as you saw that a stone was cut out of the mountain without hands, and that it crushed the iron, the bronze, the clay, the silver, and the gold, the great God has made known to the king what will take place in the future; so the dream is true, and its interpretation is trustworthy." Man. There you go, from Daniel, chapter 2. "So the day is coming," says Zechariah, "when God will be king over the whole earth." Zechariah, chapter 14, verse 9. "As the drama of the consummation moves toward the final scene, the host of heaven proclaimeth a complete." During his earthly ministry, Jesus had resisted the tempting offer of Satan to hand over the kingdom of this world in exchange for worship. Matthew, chapter 4, verses 8 and 9. "Now this sovereignty passes to him as a rightful possession in view of a successful completion of his messianic ministry." "Our Lord and His Christ," reflects Psalm 2, verse 2, which was interpreted messianically by the early church. And we see this in Acts 4. So let's go ahead and go to Psalm 2. "Psalm 2: Why are the nations in an uproar, and the peoples devising a vain thing? The kings of the earth take their stand, and the rulers take counsel together against Yahweh and against his anointed." Saying, so for those of you that maybe don't know, that word "anointed" is what we get the word Messiah or even Christ from. So, anointed. Saying, "Let us tear their fetters apart and cast away their cords from us; he who sits in the heavens laughs; Yahweh scoffs at them. Then he will speak to them in his anger, and terrify them in his fury, saying, 'But as for me, I have installed my king upon Zion, my holy mountain. I will surely tell of the decree of Yahweh; he said to me, 'You are my son; today I have begotten you. Ask of me, and I will surely give the nations as your inheritance, and the very ends of the earth as your possession. You shall break them with a rod of iron; you shall shatter them like earth and ware. Now therefore, O kings, show discernment; take warning, O judges of the earth; worship Yahweh with reverence, and rejoice with trembling; do homage to the Son, that he not become angry, and you perish in the way; for his wrath may soon be kindled; how blessed are all who take refuge in him!" That's so good. That's so, so good. And so that is quoted in Acts, chapter 4. Anybody bring their Bible bingo marker? That would be great. Just, just to see how, what all we cover. All right, Acts, chapter 4, verses 26 through 28. Backing up just a little bit, maybe 23 there. "When they had released, when they had been released," and so we're talking about Peter and John, they'd been arrested. "They went to their own companions, and reported all that the chief priests and the elders had said to them; and when they heard this, they lifted up their voices to God with one accord, and said, 'O Lord, it is you who made the heaven and the earth and the sea, and all that is in them, who by the Holy Spirit, through the mouth of your, our Father, David, your servant, said, 'Why did the Gentiles rage, and the peoples devise futile things?'" "The kings of the earth took their stand, and the rulers were gathered together against the Lord and against His Christ." "For truly in this city there were gathered together against your holy servant, Jesus, whom you anointed, both Herod and Pontius Pilate, along with the Gentiles and the peoples of Israel, to do whatever your hand and your purpose predestined to occur; and now, Lord, take note of their threats, and grant that your bond servants may speak your word with all confidence, while you extend your hand to heal, and signs and wonders take place through the name of your holy servant, Jesus. And when they prayed, the place where they had gathered together was shaken; and they were all filled with the Holy Spirit, and began to speak the word of God with boldness." Sorry, got a little carried away, read a little bit more, couldn't resist, so. That's right, it's hard to stop. So, although the Son will ultimately be subjected to the Father, 1 Corinthians 15, 28, he will nevertheless share the eternal rule of God. The singular "he will reign" emphasizes the unity of this joint sovereignty. So, do we need to go to 1 Corinthians 15? Hey, why not?
Yeah, oh, we got E-caps open here.
That's right. 1 Corinthians 15. This is the glorious resurrection, resurrection chapter. This, I mean, this, this 58 verses of just mind-blowing. I don't know about you, but just, I think a lot about discipleship, and it's like this chapter, it's got to be like one of the first ones, you just have a new believer read, just to like, just grasp the magnitude of the plans that God has for us in the future. That like death is not the end of this. To know what the blood of Christ has paid for in atoning our sins, but also giving us the resurrection to life. Ah, man, so good. All right, 1 Corinthians 15, verse 28. "When all things are subjected to him, then the Son himself also will be subjected to the one who subjected all things to him; so that God may be all in all." So, that can be your Trinitarian meditation for this week. All right. Verse 16. "And the twenty-four elders who sit on their thrones before God fell on their faces and worshiped God." The twenty-four elders last appeared in chapter 7, verse 11, where they were prostrate before the throne of God in worship and praise. Although normally seated, they are here once again on their faces, and singing a hymn of anticipated victory. The elders are in, well, so, so according to Mounts, the elders are in angelic order, the heavenly counterpart of God's people in all ages. And we talked about that much earlier on, although it's funny, because I don't think Mounts had much to say about them then, especially them being in angelic order. So I thought that was interesting, once again, providing a few different perspectives on this. And we'll definitely see, definitely, yeah, departure in the next chapter, where we'll pull a lot more from Heiser, and then also present Mounts's material as well. So, you could almost probably just do two columns of interpretation there when we get to 12. So, that was just a warning. Verse 17. "So the elders were saying, 'We give you thanks, O Lord God, The Almighty, who are and who were, because you have taken your great power and have begun to reign.'" The song of the elders is a hymn of thanksgiving to the one who with a great display of power will enter upon his eternal reign. "The event is so certain that throughout this section, it is repeatedly spoken of as already having taken place. Great power does not indicate omnipotence as a divine attribute in a general sense, but points to the final conflict in which God overpowers his enemies." As in chapter 1, verse 8, and chapter 4, verse 8, he is the Lord God Almighty. He is able to accomplish all that is in his decrees, all the things that he has decreed, he is determined to do. And in the same two passages, chapter 1, verse 8, and chapter 4, verse 8, as well as in chapter 1, verse 4, he is the one who is, who was, and who is to come. In the present verse, the third designation is to come, is omitted, because his coming is no longer seen as future. How cool is that? Anybody read that and be like, hey, it's missing part of it? It's not just a title, like it's a declaration. He has already come, so we don't even need to say, right, who is to come. He's here. The one who was, and the one who is. So, already he has come and has begun to reign. Verse 18, "And the nations were enraged, and your wrath came; and the time came for the dead to be judged, and the time to reward your bond servants, the prophets and the saints, and those who fear your name, the small and the great, to destroy those who destroy the earth." So the reign of God is established by a great demonstration of divine wrath against the defiant anger of the world. And we'll see this in chapter 16, especially. "The eschatological crisis has arrived with its inevitable judgment; as the proclamation of the heavenly host drew upon a messianic interpretation of Psalm 2, so also does the song of the elders. Nations and their rulers plot rebellion against God and his anointed; and he terrifies them with his fury." Once again, Psalm 2. "There is an appropriateness in God's tailoring the punishment to fit the crime. A final fierce assault upon the power and authority of God is a common apocalyptic theme. The triumph of God's wrath is pictured in chapter 14, chapter 16, and chapter 20." So if you want those verses, chapter 14, verses 10 and 11, chapter 16, verses 15 through 21, and chapter 20, verses 8 and 9. And you know what? Just because we're encountering a summary statement here, let's go ahead and read those. I know, kind of breaking our own rule here, reading ahead. But this is a little bit unique, because this is kind of the foreshadowing of what is to come. So, let's go ahead and start here. Let's go ahead and roll over to 14, chapter 14, verses 10 and 11. Starting at 9. "Then another angel, a third one, followed them, saying with a loud voice, 'If anyone worships the beast and his image, and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger; and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels and in the presence of the Lamb. And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever; they have no rest, day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name.'" Wow, man. Can't wait, can't wait till like just kind of move through this and like just get into this. Chapter 16, verses 15 through 21. "Behold, I am coming like a thief; blessed is the one who stays awake and keeps his clothes, so that he will not walk about naked, and men will not see his shame." We'll discuss that when we get there. "And they gathered them together to the place, which in Hebrew is called Har-Magedon. Then the seventh angel poured out his bowl upon the air, and the loud voice came out of the temple from the throne, saying, 'It is done;' and there were flashes of lightning, and sounds, and peals of thunder; and there was a great earthquake, such as there had not been since man came to be upon the earth. So great an earthquake was it, and so mighty! The great city was split into three parts, and the cities of the nations fell. Babylon the great was remembered before God to give her the cup of the wine of his fierce wrath; and every island fled away, and the mountains were not found. And huge hailstones, about one hundred pounds each, came down, and down from heaven, upon men; and men blasphemed God because of the plague of the hail, because its plague was extremely severe." So everybody notice what we just read right here was mentioned in chapter 11, right? So once again, just kind of reinforcing the idea of this being summary. Chapter 20, verses 8 and 9. Okay, starting at 7. "When the thousand years are completed, Satan will be released from his prison, and will come out to deceive the nations, which are in the four corners of the earth, Gog and Magog, to gather them together for the war; the number of them is like the sand of the seashore. And they came up on the broad plain of the earth, and surrounded the camp of the saints and the beloved city; and fire came down from heaven, and devoured them. And the devil who deceived them was thrown into the lake of fire and brimstone, where the beast and the false prophet are also; and they will be tormented day and night, forever and ever." All right. Sweet dreams. So, in the schedule of God's redemptive program, a decisive point has now been reached. It is a fitting time for judgment, reward, and destruction. "The judgment anticipated by the elders is carried out in the great white throne scene of chapter 20, verses 11 through 15. It is preceded by resurrection and followed by retribution. If the wrath of God is the judgment of the wicked, the vision of a new Jerusalem, in chapter 21, with the presence of God, its crowning joy; chapter 22 is the reward of the faithful. Although rewards are all of grace, Romans 4:4, they vary according to what each has done." 1 Corinthians, chapter 3, verse 8. Let's go there. And in case you're wondering, why does Luke look up some and not others? I'm looking up the ones that I think, I don't know if they believe me unless I actually read that one out for them. 1 Corinthians, chapter 3, verse 8. And that's okay, you shouldn't believe me until you read it yourself, so. Just making sure you do that. "Now he who plants, and he who waters are one; but each will receive his own reward according to his own labor." So, for we are God's fellow workers, you are God's field, God's building. So. Actually, even, I mean, just that whole section is really good, but it only highlights what we're reading there in verse 8. "The various classes of the faithful are taken in a number of ways; a reasonable translation would be your servants, the prophets, and your saints; those who reverence your name, both small and great. There are two groups, prophets and saints, who are further described as fearing the name of God. This arrangement holds intact the expression 'your servants, the prophets,' which occurs again at chapter 10, verse 7, and joins to it a second group, the saints, as in chapter 16, verse 6, 'the blood of your saints and prophets.'" Chapter 18, verse 24, the order is reversed. Chapter 22, verse 9, "the prophets and all who keep the words of this book," i.e. saints. John holds the prophetic office in high esteem. One might also say that in Revelation, the prophet has replaced the apostle by taking those who reverence your name as a further description of the prophets and saints. It is unnecessary to find... It is unnecessary to find additional distinctions, such as between Jewish and Gentile Christians. In chapter nineteen, verse five, all God's servants are addressed as you who fear him, both small and great. The latter phrase, perhaps from Psalm one fifteen, verse thirteen, is common in Revelation and stresses the all-inclusive nature of the group involved, whether saints or sinners. So. The consummation will bring not only reward to the faithful, but destruction to the destroyers. We can also see this for reference in Second Thessalonians, chapter one, verses six and seven. Let's go there. Second Thessalonians. Chapter one, verses six and seven. Starting at verse five. This is a plain indication of God's righteous judgment, so that you will be considered worthy of the kingdom of God, for which indeed you are suffering. For after all, it is only just for God to repay with affliction those who afflict you, and to give relief to you who are afflicted, and to us as well, when the Lord Jesus will be revealed from heaven with his mighty angels in flaming fire, dealing out retribution to those who do not know God and to those who do not obey the gospel of our Lord Jesus. These will pay the penalty of eternal destruction away from the presence of the Lord and from the glory of his power, when he comes to be glorified in his saints on that day, and to be marveled at among all who have believed, for our testimony to you was believed. Wow. Verse eleven, to this end, also, we pray for you always, that our God will count you worthy of your calling, and fulfill every desire for goodness and the work of faith with power, so that the name of our Lord Jesus will be glorified in you and you in him, according to the grace of our God and the Lord Jesus Christ. Thank you for your patience, as I just want to continue reading, right? I'm reading, I'm like, oh, I haven't read the Second Thessalonians in a while. That was good. That's good stuff. So. Like, can I squeeze that in this week for some more reading? So. Um, so God repays in kind, and for those who wreak havoc on the earth, there is reserved the wrath of a righteous God. See this also in Romans, chapter two, verse five. Those who destroy would be for John, the Roman Empire, and all who serve its sinister designs. The pagan empire of his day becomes a model for the final assault, which knows no limitations, national or racial. Verse nineteen. Any questions on eighteen or thus far? No? Okay. Verse nineteen. In the temple of God, which is in heaven, was opened, and the ark of his covenant appeared in his temple, and there were flashes of lightning and sounds and peals of thunder and an earthquake and a great hailstorm. Verse nineteen is a response to the hymn of praise in verses seventeen and eighteen. The ark of the covenant corresponds to the rewarding of the faithful and the cosmic disturbances to the outpouring of God's wrath. The sanctuary that opens to reveal the ark of the covenant is not an earthly temple, but the sanctuary of God in heaven. So once again, just kind of reinforces the idea that some of the designs that God gave to Moses and later to Solomon was a replica, was a copy of what was in heaven. It's kind of an interesting idea, right? Also, if John is seeing the ark of the covenant, it would have been for the first time, because the ark had been lost. So that's kind of a cool idea, that even in a vision state, he is seeing the ark of the covenant in the temple of God in heaven. Wow. Now, this also speaks to the kingship of God, right? Because this is something that they would have in their temples. Uh, there would be a copy of like covenants, like so the covenant writing would be in the temple, and then the king would keep a copy with himself. But we see both of these actually kept in the ark of the covenant. And so it just further reiterates that God is king. So it's pretty neat. So from this most holy place, proceed both the promise of covenant love and righteous anger. The opening of the temple is of limited duration and serves to reveal a heavenly ark, a symbol of God's faithfulness in fulfilling his covenant promises. For the days of wrath that lie immediately ahead, believers will need the assurance that God will bring his own safely to their eternal reward. So in the Old Testament, the ark of the covenant was a symbol of the abiding presence of God. It was undoubtedly destroyed when Nebusaradon raised Jerusalem and burned the temple. Second Kings, chapter twenty-five, verses eight through ten. Yet in Second Maccabees, chapter two, verses four through eight, records a legend that Jeremiah took the ark, along with the tent of meeting and the incense altar, and hid it in a cave on Mount Nebo. Has anybody ever heard that? Comes from Second Maccabees. There you go. It was to remain hidden until God finally gathers his people together and shows mercy to them. Second Maccabees, chapter two, verse seven. This reflects the Jewish expectation of the recovery of the ark as an eschatological event with messianic significance. It is unlikely, however, that the heavenly ark of John's vision is in any sense a fulfillment of this expectation. The entire scene is a gracious reminder that God will faithfully carry out his covenant promises and destroy the enemies of his people. Remember, it's a vision. I mean, especially in the imagery that we're about to get into. Not everything is super literal, right? So it's conveying a message. So. All right, any questions on chapter eleven? All right. Oh, boy, here we go. Chapter twelve, gonna go all over the place here. Like I said, we're probably gonna have like two different streams of thought. And I'll even throw Craig Keener in for a little bit of other. For a little flavor. So, uh, let's go ahead and we'll read through the chapter first, the whole chapter. Then like we do, kind of do some of the summary as we over the whole chapter, and then we'll break it down verse by verse. Yeah, and I think I'm gonna jump back and forth. Um, like, we'll cover all of one, but from different perspective, like verse one, and then verse two from both perspectives, just kind of go out like that. So if you want, you're making your notes, you can, and you can even title it Mount versus Hyzer. So. Balfed Kaiser from this morning. That's funny. All right, Revelation twelve. A great sign appeared in heaven. A woman clothed with the sun and the moon under her feet, and on her head, a crown of twelve stars. And she was with child, and she cried out, being in labor and in pain, to give birth. Then another sign appeared in heaven, and behold, a great red dragon, having seven heads and ten horns. And on his heads were seven diadems. And his tail swept away a third of the stars of heaven and threw them to the earth. And the dragon stood before the woman who was about to give birth, so that when she gave birth, he might devour her child. And she gave birth to a son, a male child, who is to rule all the nations with a rod of iron. And her child was caught up to God and to his throne. Then the woman fled into the wilderness, where she had a place prepared by God, so that there she would be nourished for one thousand, two hundred and sixty days. And there was war in heaven. Michael and his angels waging war with the dragon. The dragon and his angels waged war, and they were not strong enough. And there was no longer a place found for them in heaven. And the great dragon was thrown down, the serpent of old, who is called the devil and Satan, who deceives the whole world, he was thrown down to the earth, and his angels were thrown down with him. Then I heard a loud voice in heaven, saying, now the salvation and the power and the kingdom of our God and the authority of his Christ have come. For the accuser of our brethren has been thrown down, he who accuses them before our God day and night. And they overcame him because of the blood of the Lamb and because of the word of their testimony. And they did not love their life even when faced with death. For this reason, rejoice, O heavens, and you who dwell in them, woe to the earth and the sea, because the devil has come down to you, having great wrath, knowing that he has only a short time. And when the dragon saw that he was thrown down to the earth, he persecuted the woman who gave birth to the male child. But the two wings of the great eagle were given to the woman, so that she could fly into the wilderness, to her place, where she was nourished for a time and times and half a time from the presence of the serpent. And the serpent poured water like a river out of his mouth after the woman, so that he might cause her to be swept away with the flood. But the earth helped the woman, and the earth opened up, opened its mouth and drank up the river, which the dragon poured out of his mouth. So the dragon was enraged with the woman and went off to make war with the rest of her children, who keep the commandments of God and hold to the testimony of Jesus. Oh, there might be a few things to discuss here. Oh, boy. All right. Uh, let's see here. All kinds of notes here, just trying to get them straight. So. From Mount first, so just kind of some opening remarks, and this is really the conflict, what he sees as the conflict between the church and the powers of evil. And this is chapter twelve, verse one, to chapter fourteen, verse five. So chapter twelve marks a major division in the book of Revelation before the seven last plagues of chapter sixteen, in which the wrath of God is finished. John turns aside to explain the underlying cause for the hostility about to break upon the church. During his earthly ministry, Jesus had warned, if they persecuted me, they will persecute you also, John fifteen, twenty. It is the age-long conflict between God and Satan that accounts for the persecution the church is to experience. So already, Mount is even kind of front-loading this a little bit, where what we just read in twelve is the reason why Satan hates the church. Although the crucial battle was won when Christ arose victorious over death and the grave, the adversary continues his struggle. Cast down from heaven and knowing that his time is short, Satan turns enraged against the faithful who obey God's commandments and hold to the testimony of Jesus. By laying bare the root cause of persecution, John would encourage believers to hold fast in the coming tribulation. The death struggle of a defeated foe will bring severe tribulation. But the outcome is certain, God will come in judgment to destroy his enemies. Chapters fifteen through nineteen, and reward his own, chapter twenty through twenty-two. The stage is thus set for the final confrontation. Chapters twelve through fourteen introduce the actors who play the major roles. Some writers identify the seven main characters as the radiant woman, the dragon, the man-child, Michael, the seed of the woman, and the two beasts. Others who organize the chapters around the number seven find seven oracles depicting the supernatural conflict between the forces of light and the forces of darkness, or seven signs connected with the troubles of the church. So there's, choose your own adventure, right? So the chapter consists of three scenes, the woman, the dragon, and the male child, verses one through six. Satan defeated and cast out of heaven, verses seven through twelve. And the persecution of the woman and her offspring. While the third scene is a continuation and expansion of the first, the second scene serves to explain Satan's violent opposition to the church. So really, what, how Mount is approaching this, it's just, it's all an explanation for what we're about to read. Why is Satan acting this way? Like, we know of his animosity towards God, towards Michael and the other angels that did not fall. Him losing his position. Him being cast down to the earth. So now this is where, who's he gonna rage against? Oh, God's people. And so then that's what kind of lines up the next few chapters. So together, they reveal to the believing community the ultimate cause for the increased opposition and hostility they will meet in the last days. Beyond that, the visions in chapter twelve form the theological heart of the entire book. Beyond that, uh, oh, I'm sorry, in Christ, uh, God engaged Satan in the ultimate battle of the holy war. The redemptive triumph of Christ in his death and resurrection was the crucial defeat of Satan and the forces of evil. Yet for a time, the dragon vigorously pursues the people of God. Hence, there is great suffering in the final days, which extend from Pentecost to the return of Christ. So really taking a lot in this chapter as kind of answering all the why questions. All right. Craig Keener. And this is from the IVP New Testament Background Commentary. So this vision, chapter twelve, re-applies imagery that was widely known in ancient mythology. Oh, I also thought this would serve as a good bridge between Mount and Hyzer. So there's that for you. A common Greek story, spread in several forms, presented Leto begetting the god Apollo while opposed by the dragon Python. Everybody tracking on that? Leto begetting the god Apollo while opposed by the dragon Python. Relevant for our conversation. Apollo then pursued the dragon Python and slew him. In an Egyptian story, the goddess Isis gave birth to the sun god Horus as the red dragon Typhon was pursuing her. Horus eventually killed Typhon. Some argue that people also applied such popular stories to the Roman emperor, whose rule is here linked with the evil dragon, in contrast with Roman tradition, which portrayed him in terms of the hero Apollo. That's fascinating. Although these stories omit many details, John includes from other sources. His whole account could be reproduced from the Old Testament and Jewish sources. They indicate that all his readers could identify with a storyline that modern readers often find impenetrable. But ancient readers familiar with the Bible would especially recognize here the story of Israel giving birth and Satan's opposition to God's people. So basically, what Keener was maintaining is that like we find roots of this, what we just read in chapter twelve, within Greek mythology, Roman, Egyptian, and so you think of his readers, they're all imagining this, but from a Christian perspective. Like, they know who the good guy is, who the bad guy is, so on and so forth. But then, just a little twist of irony, is where the Roman emperor becomes the bad guy instead of the hero. I like that one. So. All right, now. Now, um... Okay. Looking for... I might just go to a book for this. All right. Okay. So basically, in a nutshell, based on Dr. Ernest Martin's material, Heizer is presenting the imagery, at least in the first part of this, with the woman and the dragon, the male child, as recreating the astrological signs around Jesus's birth and a lot of the circumstances around it. Do you have that image by chance? Yeah. Well, David's looking for that. So that is really it in a nutshell. I will go through the different ones that he lines out. But, like I said, that, interestingly enough, that when you take these as astrological signs or constellations, the way that they're described in chapter 12... Oh, there you go. That didn't turn out so good. But what it leads to is, basically, what the sky would have looked like on September 11th of 3 B.C., which is a time that Jesus, that scholars think that Jesus could have been born, that these would have been what the Magi were following, and his star. This also happens to be the Feast of Trumpets in 3 B.C., which, anybody that follows, you know, how Jesus fulfilled the spring feast, the feast of Yahweh, recorded in Leviticus, this kind of carries its own significance in even the start of the fall feast. So, yeah. So, I'm sorry.
There's so much more to that.
There's so much more. There's so much more. So, this is significant in its own right, but, like I said, we'll get into it. Heizer has much to say about each of these figures as we read through. So, we will tackle it that way. Yes?
What is this figure supposed to be?
Yeah. So, what we have here is Leo. The lion. And then Virgo, the virgin. And there is, like, the sun, the moon, Jupiter, here is in Leo. And at this time, like Jupiter would have been super bright, and they think that that's the star that the Magi were following. And that's kind of the king star. Go ahead, go ahead.
Heizer has a YouTube video that explains it.
You know what? I'll link that in the Sunday Night Seminar. Oh, if you can, go for it. So, just, my, Dr. Heizer has a really good YouTube video that will explain it way better. I will still read through the material, just for YouTube's sake, and for everybody here that doesn't want to watch the video, but Heizer definitely does a better job, because it's his material. So, but yeah, just in a nutshell, like, it's just a completely different perspective than what Mounts takes, and even Keener. Like I said, Keener takes much more of kind of the ancient mythological approach in that John is communicating a true story in a way that people from other cultures would have understood. Does that make sense? So there's no compromise there, there's no, you know... So even what Keener is presenting is legit. And he even recognizes that much of this could have even been drawn from the Old Testament.
Even though there's different perspectives on this, do they all still align?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There's, they, even though there's different perspectives, they all still align. Like, there's a variation there, because obviously, what Mounts is presenting is very church-centered. What Heizer is pointing to, the woman just being, you know, with the 12 stars being Israel, and that Jesus being born from, like, Israel. So, it's almost where Mounts is kind of fast-forwarding through why is Satan raging against the church? Whereas Heizer's going a little bit further back to, I mean, what were the circumstances around Jesus's birth? So, it's kind of, yeah. So, yeah, good. Any other questions? All right. So as we get into this, well, there'll be plenty of other questions. So, all right. So, verse 1. "A great sign appeared in heaven, a woman clothed with the sun and the moon under her feet, and on her head, a crown of 12 stars." So, a great and wonderful sign, this is from Mounts. "A great and wonderful sign appeared in heaven, a woman clothed with the sun, with moon under her feet, and a crown of 12 stars on her head. She was pregnant and cried out in pain..." Oh, I'm sorry. So verses 1 and 2 from Mounts. "The pageant opens with the display of a wonderful sign in the sky. A woman appears, who is clothed with the sun, crowned with 12 stars, with the moon under her feet." As in chapter 12, verse 3, and chapter 15, verse 1, the word "sign" is to be understood as a great spectacle that points to the consummation. Elsewhere in Revelation, the word is used of the deceptive miracles performed by the representatives of Satan. Now already, you might be thinking, hey, wait a second. Isn't that mentioned in Genesis? Right? So, let's see here. So, going back, Genesis, chapter 1, verse 14. "Then God said, 'Let there be lights in the expanse of the heavens to separate the day from the night, and let them be for signs,'" same word, "and for seasons, and for days and years." So, signs. So, although the woman gives birth to the Messiah, she is not to be understood as Mary, the mother of Jesus, but the messianic community. See, once again, you can kind of see a little bit of a divergence there from Mounts. He's seeing this as the messianic community. The ideal Israel, Zion, as the mother of the people of God is a common theme in Jewish writings. "It is out of faithful Israel that the Messiah will come; it should cause no trouble that within the same chapter the woman comes to signify the church." So you can already see just a little bit of, a little gymnastics there. But, that's okay. "The people of God are one throughout all redemptive history; the early church did not view itself as discontinuous with faithful Israel." "As God covers himself in light as with a garment," Psalm 104, verse 2, "so the woman is clothed with the sun. The world may despise the true Israel and hold it in lowest esteem; but from God's point of view, she is a radiant bride. She stands as an obvious contrast to the scarlet whore of chapter 17." "The moon beneath her feet, perhaps as a footstool, speaks of dominion; and the crown of 12 stars depicts royalty." So once again, Mounts's interpretation of this. So, moon beneath her feet speaks of dominion, the crown of 12 stars depicts royalty. "The radiant woman is about to give birth to a child; she cries out in pain as she is about to deliver." The Old Testament frequently pictured Israel as a woman in travail. Isaiah speaks of Israel in bondage as a woman with child and about to give birth, rise and cries out in her pain. Isaiah, chapter 26, verse 17. Also for reference, Isaiah 66, verse 7. "In John's vision, the woman in travail is the true Israel in her pre-messianic agony of expectation." So, once again, just kind of food for thought here, right? All right. From, yes? I think just as communicating, like, luminaries in the sky, like, if it's at her feet, there is a level of, like, subjugation, right? So there is an authority of being above that. Just assuming that's what Mounts says. There's really no footnotes to that or anything. So, really trying to be kind, especially, like, since this is recorded. Like, and, you know, like I said, I'm just giving this as another perspective, but there's really nothing else.
I guess, though, like, is it the moon versus the sun, like, being the sun?
Clothed with the sun, as opposed to, you know, which could speak of glory, or, you know, the presence, radiance and presence of God. But, yeah, I don't know. Yeah, and already, we're just seeing a certain level of interpretation of some of this, right? Well, there you go. So there was a note in the Amplified Bible pointing to the sun representing Jacob, who was also named Israel, and the moon speaking to Rachel. So, see, what, I mean, honestly, like, we're getting into the point of Revelation where there's not going to be, like, any end to the level of interpretation of some of the things we're reading. So, you know, and that's why I, like, want to be fair and just kind of, like, hey, here's what people have interpreted this as. I mean, obviously not exhaustively, but some of these, especially from respected scholars. But like, once, just gonna keep getting into it, and I think it's gonna sort itself out. You know, just, there you go. So, and then, you know what? I'm throwing some Osborne for fun, too. Just for fun. All right. So, from Keener. And really, I mean, I just, I'll keep this in here, just to spice it up. So, actually, I really appreciate, you know, the IVP Background Commentaries, Old Testament, New Testament. It's just good. It's just good to, like, have around, and it presents a little bit of a different perspective. So, I enjoy them. All right. So, on verses 1 and 2. "So symbolic women occasionally appeared in apocalyptic visions. Ancient writers sometimes meant signs in heaven astrologically. Consider Virgo, the virgin, and Draco, the dragon or serpent; but these signs were also fairly common as props in apocalyptic visions. The sun, moon, and 12 stars help identify the woman as the 12 tribes of Israel," Genesis 37, verse 9. Judaism in this period, like what we have from Josephus, Philo, later evident in synagogue mosaics, and the rabbis often associated the 12 signs of the zodiac with the 12 tribes, despite biblical prohibitions against astrological speculation. Indeed, the romance novel Joseph and Asanath borrows 12 rays from the typical Greek imagery for the sun god; but the Genesis reference itself is clear enough to show that the allusion is to Israel. So, let's go ahead, Genesis 37, verse 9. Some of you may already recall, and this is kind of going along with what the Amplified Bible has said a little bit. So we're talking about Joseph's dream. Joseph receives a dream. "Now he had still another dream, and related it to his brothers, and said, 'Lo, I have had still another dream; and behold, the sun and the moon and 11 stars were bowing down to me.' He related it to his father and to his brothers; and his father rebuked him, and said to him, 'What is this dream that you have had? Shall I and your mother, Rachel, and your brothers actually come to bow ourselves down before you to the ground?'" So, so there seems to be a precedent there for that interpretation. Now, so, but Genesis, but the Genesis reference itself is clear enough to show that the allusion is to Israel. Also, Abraham and Sarah as sun and moon to Isaac is found in the Testament of Abraham, which is another typographical writing. The Old Testament portrayal, the Old Testament portrayed faithful Israel, or Judah, or Jerusalem at different times, as a virgin or God's bride, but their unfaithful equivalent as a prostitute. Thus, the tale of two cities that contrast the heavenly Jerusalem and Babylon, the prostitute. So some of these references are bringing up other imagery from the Old Testament, right? Because as we're talking about the virgin, oh, they're thinking Jerusalem, or Judah, or Israel. But then, we're gonna talk about prostitute and Babylon. And so they're just kind of immediately thinking back throughout the Old Testament. "So righteous Israel was portrayed as the mother of the restored future remnant of Israel, an image freely mixed with the image of Israel as a bride," Isaiah 62, verse 5. "The dead sea scrolls also spoke of the righteous remnant of Israel travailing to give birth, either to a saved Israel or to the Messiah." The precise reference is disputed. So, it's kind of interesting. Now, from Heizer's The Old Testament in Revelation, this is notes from the Naked Bible Podcast. Yes, that is the name of the podcast. "So, the woman, the key figure and logical starting point for interpreting Revelation 12 astronomically, is the woman. Since the woman gives birth to the messianic figure, we would assume Jesus, and then is persecuted and has to flee into the desert, scholars agree that verses 2 through 6 reveal that this woman is a picture of the faithful community, Israel, which existed both before and after the coming of Christ. Israel, of course, is described as the virgin of Zion in the Old Testament and produces the Messiah in fulfillment of Old Testament prophecy. More specifically, of course, Mary comes to mind as the Jewish girl who gives birth to Jesus. But virgin Israel best fits both parts of the description of the woman. Additionally, the connection to virgin Israel is important, given that the signage would have to be decipherable to Jews at the time of Jesus's birth. At that time, Mary's circumstances would have been entirely unknown. The meaning of the virgin and the 12 stars around her head is evident in second temple-period Jewish literature, as well as later rabbinic thought. What is John signifying when describing this woman? This much is certain. The woman in the first three verses is featured as being in heaven, and both the sun and the moon are in association with her. Revelation 12:1 gives us clear details. The woman is clothed with the sun; there are 12 stars around her head, and the moon is at her feet. She is an astronomical heavenly sign. The idea that the woman is a constellation is made plausible when one looks closely at the text. The description that the woman was clothed with the sun is stock astronomical language for the sun being in the midst of a constellation. So, this is common language, in astronomical terms, for the sun being in the midst of the constellation. "While the sun is in the woman, the moon is at her feet. For this situation to occur, the constellation of the woman must be, in astronomical language, on the ecliptic, the imaginary line in the sky that the sun and moon follow in their journey through the zodiac constellations." Martin writes, "The apostle John saw the scene when the sun was clothing or adorning the woman. This surely indicates that the position of the sun in the vision was located somewhere mid-bodied to the woman, between the neck and the knees. The sun could hardly be said to clothe her if it were situated in her face or near her feet. The only time in the year that the sun could be in a position to clothe..." The only time in the year that the sun could be in a position to clothe the celestial woman called Virgo. That is to be mid-bodied to her in the region where a pregnant woman carries a child is when the sun is located between about 150, 150 and 170 degrees along the ecliptic. This clothing of the woman by the sun occurs for a 20 day period each year. This 20 degree spread could indicate the general time when Jesus was born. So the constellation of the virgin giving birth to the Messiah would of course have been viewed as quite coherent by the Magi. Especially if they knew about Isaiah, chapter seven, verse 14. But even if they were ignorant of this prophecy, this astro theological linkage would still make sense to them since the sign we know as Virgo has strong associations with other ancient mother goddess figures who would produce divine kings. So let's go to Isaiah, chapter seven, verse 14 for reference. Uh, we'll go ahead and start at verse 10. Then, then Yahweh spoke again to Ehas saying, ask a sign for yourself from Yahweh, your God. Make it deep as sheol or high as heaven. But Ehas said, I will not ask, nor will I test Yahweh. Then he said, listen now, oh, house of David. Is it too slight a thing for you to try the patience of men? That you will try the patience of my God as well. Therefore Yahweh himself will give you a sign. Behold, a virgin will be with child and bear a son. And she will call his name Emmanuel. He will eat curds and honey at the time he knows enough to refuse evil and choose good. For before the boy will know enough to refuse evil and choose good. The land whose two kings you dread will be forsaken. So. Uh, Isaiah seven, 14. So the detail that the moon was located under the feet of the woman Virgo must not be forgotten in all of this. The sun must be in the virgin constellation while the moon is simultaneously at her feet for John's vision to be accurately interpreted astronomically. Because of the moon's behavior related to the ecliptic and Virgo in any given year. The 20 day window narrows to a roughly 90 minute period in which to astronomically pinpoint the birth of the child. Wow. So obviously Heiser is going all in on the astronomical part of this, right? So what we're reading here in these first two verses are constellations. He's going to continue that interpretation through the rest of this section. So. Uh, any questions on that before we go back to Mount's? Or just because you're all here in front of me. Would you rather me go through like one interpretation? For like the next six verses and then go to somebody else's and kind of follow that line of thought? What do you think? Verse at a time? Okay. All right. Okay. Just checking. Really, this is, uh, like I, like I said before, this is really the main. This is one of the first points in the text that we have like a pretty big divergence among some of these scholars. So. Yes. Yeah. He's quoting a Dr. Martin. And I had that in front of me. Yeah. Have to look that up. There you go. So, um, and then Grant Osborne. Uh, he has a few thoughts on this as well. So. So in his view. The woman is clothed in the sun and the moon under her feet and a crown of 12 stars on her head. This threefold description of her majesty stems from Joseph's dream of Genesis 37, which we just read. In the first dream, the sheaves of grain bound with brother, da, 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 da. Let me skip down here. Therefore it seems likely that the woman here represents Israel, the people of God. With chapter 12, verse 17, where she represents the church. We can conclude that she represents the whole people of God, Israel and the church. And the Old Testament imagery of the sun, moon and stars has a broad spectrum of connotations centering primarily on Yahweh's control over the constellations. They praise and witness to God symbolize endurance. And are darkened on the day of wrath. Yahweh clothes himself with light like a garment, showing that the woman being clothed with the sun connotes majesty. The moon in the Old Testament signifies beauty and glory. The moon being under her feet stresses her reign or dominion. The crown is used in the apocalypse in Revelation to show the reign of Christ, the dominion of the 24 elders or the future reign of his people. So. So Grant Osborne's falling a little bit more in line with Mount's in this. Personally, oh, sorry. Uh, personally, I really think that Heiser's uh, view of this just, it carries, it, it holds the most water. It just does. Um, that's just my view on that. Uh, I am intrigued by Keener's view on it, but like I said, so. Everybody ready to move to verse three or was there any other questions on verses one and two? Is everybody lost? Everybody tracking? Okay. We're good. All right. I just want to make sure. Yeah. Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, um, so when we go back uh, to Genesis one. Oh, sorry. Uh, so as we're talking about some of these constellations. What we're talking about is astronomy, not necessarily astrology. So. As we talk about here, uh. So the lights uh, in the expanse of the heavens to separate the day from the night. Let them be for signs and for seasons and for days and years. So basically it's kind of tracking the seasons. It's tracking, um, you know, the, the time of the year that it is. And they would be able to understand that by the positioning of the constellations. Not just by the sun and moon. I mean, I, I think a lot of times in our modern era, we see that like, oh, sun's up. It's daytime. Like that's kind of the limitation, right? Uh, we don't even follow the moon to know like what day of the month it is. The cycles of the moon and everything else. But they would have done that. They would have known what season it was, what month it was by following that on a daily basis. I mean, where would we be if we didn't have our calendars? Whether it be on our phone or even a paper calendar hanging on a wall. I just completely lost. Like, I mean, just a lot of those skills are just completely gone. So a lot of times when we talk about constellations and astronomy, different things like that, like. Easily like confuse that with astrology. Astrology is the perversion of those things that God has created. And they're using it to foretell the future, to uh, determine. I don't know, your mood for that day or whatever else, you know? And that's when you get into the horoscopes and everything. All of that is not of God. That is a perversion of, an abuse of what he has created. So it's okay, as we're talking about this and looking at the times and seasons, even in reverse order, all the way back to 3 B.C. in this case, where some of these things would actually line up. So, and obviously the Magi were following this as a sign. So they knew something big was happening. And this was actually an area of expertise of the Persian Magi. So it all really syncs up nicely.
So what was Heiser's view of this again? I'm sorry. We've talked about so many different.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine. Um, so in summary. You have Mount and really Grant Osborne as well, kind of lining this out as uh, the church or faithful Israel. Kind of broaden that a little bit more and the birth of Jesus. And then we're going to lead into why Satan hates both, right? Now what we have with uh, Keener is what John is doing here is telling the story once again of Jesus's birth. But using a story that kind of crosses cultures of his time. Whether it be Greek, Roman or Egyptian. All communicating the idea of Jesus's birth. But then also getting a little, uh, what Keener thinks is maybe a little jab at the Roman emperor. Because he's not the Apollo in the story. He's the dragon. So, um, and I don't want to include that because as we move on, as we talk about the beast and different things. Uh, Rome is going to feature much more heavily in this. So it's good to just kind of have this in the background. Now Heiser is reading this and seeing these as constellations and positioning of the sun and positioning of the moon. And really detailing a specific point in time. And that's what we had up here, September 11th of 3 B.C. Which happens to line up with the feast of trumpets as the exact moment of Jesus's birth.
So he sees this as a foretelling, so to speak, of Jesus's birth. Not so much as a foretelling, but.
As a. This is much more of a retelling of the birth of Jesus.
Right. Okay.
Like he, so, so after we've done this interlude with the church, right? The little scroll, the two witnesses. Now we're in completing the seventh trumpet. Now we're kind of doing some more backfilling here. As we're going to get into the beast and everything else. So think of what we just read in the last chapter with Jesus's return, the seventh trumpet. And all the things that were detailed in there that, oh, those are going to, that's going to come up in chapter 15 and chapter 20. I mean, we basically just read the end of the book. Or the end of the reclaiming of the earth in the last chapter. So now we're kind of backfilling a little bit of, hey, wait. Who's the main antagonist here? Oh, it's Satan. Well, he's really not had much to do yet. Oh, but he's coming. Well, okay. But if you're new to this and you don't really know the backstory, how's that going to be communicated? Ah, well here, let me lay that out for you. And so once again, I think that's what carries weight to whether it, you know, Keener's view of like, you know, the story that other people would be familiar with, but it also lines up historically with what happens in the birth of Jesus. And as we're going to see with Satan himself. And his role and how he came to the earth and the raging against God's people. So remember it's, it's answering a lot of the why questions. It's backfilling a lot of the understanding as we're going to move into more dramatic imagery. So any questions to that? I'm, I'm sorry. Sure. He posted the video to the group. So, yes. Right. Yeah. And, and I think, I think absolutely that could, that could be, it could be a combination of these. Where, I mean, because really like we're, we're kind of, it's like parsing out, like, I mean, really the same story. Because yes, we can pinpoint the birth of Jesus and everything that follows with the enemy raging, you know, the accuser has been cast down to the earth who is raging against God's people. Oh, but also like historically, here's when Jesus was born. And remember John writing to a persecuted church. Maybe a bunch of them are Gentile who've come into this. Oh, what's their background? Egyptian, Greek, Roman? All of a sudden, hey, I've heard that story since I was little. Oh, that points to Jesus. I mean, how interesting would that be that John is communicating this story? As a historical fact, but in a way that has been like relayed among some of these other cultures. Having an essence of that truth pointing to Christ. And so here he's retelling this because these people were suffering persecution. Were about to undergo persecution, were about to be martyred. But they know that they're a part of a bigger story. That they don't have to ask why. I'm just following Jesus. Why? Why are they coming after us? Oh, no, no, no. There's a bigger enemy. There is a bigger enemy, the accuser of everything. The uh, enemy of God and of everything that is of God. So because you're God's people, that's why you are suffering persecution. It answers that why question that I am a part of something bigger. And I'm not surprised at why the suffering is on my front doorstep. And at the same time, communicating a historical piece here. So, yeah, so I, I think definitely a, a both and.